Thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming. We opened the meeting at 6:30 for our book read. We're reading as a group. Leadership on the Line. We've been doing it prior to our workshop meeting. So, once a month, we meet at 6:30. Just to talk about the book, it's basically a book on leadership. And anyone is invited to participate. If you want to read along with us and participate in the communication, you're welcome. It's pretty informal, but productive. So, we'll resume that topic on January 20th. And Evan Schwartz will moderate on the 20th. Looking forward to it. Just a couple of things. Tonight's meeting were condensed from December 2nd. We were canceled due to a weather forecast, which didn't necessarily happen, I guess, but it is what it is. So, tonight's two meetings joined into one. So, it may be a little longer than we're used to, but I'm sure we can handle it prior to the holidays. Shout out to the Haldane Drama Department for their production of The Crucible. Fabulous production, as always. And as I mentioned to Mrs. Michalakis, if she keeps raising the bar any higher with Haldane Drama, we're going to have to have the roof raised. They really do an amazing job. And the kids, it's just extraordinary, the amount of time and effort that they put into this production for, you know, a weekend. And it really has come a long way in the many years that we've been here. It's amazing what the job that they do. And the kids really over and above anything that you could expect from a high school program. So, that's absolutely fabulous. A couple of little adjustments tonight. We're going to be recognizing our girl soccer team, New York State champs, as well as some academic awards. We're going to do that when the basketball game ends, because most of the kids are on the basketball team. So, they will kind of wander in at some point, when we don't know. But when they do, that's when we'll kind of stop what we're doing, and we'll do that. And then we'll take a little break, and then the kids can go home and study, or whatever they're doing when they get home. So, that's kind of an adjustment to the agenda for this. With that, I will pass it over to Dr. Bowers, who's going to talk a little bit about our strategic plan process and the discovery phase. And it's all yours.
So, we are going to, we have a number of people that are, will be presenting tonight. And I would like to...
You want us to move?
I guess. That may be up to you. If you can see it well enough, otherwise, if you want to go out into the audience, that would work as well. Am I blocking you? Okay. And then I'll be actually moving once I finish my introduction and coming back up. So, tonight, we are going to share with you the outcome of the first part of our strategic planning process, which we call the discovery process. And we have three documents that we're going to be sharing with you tonight. One document looks like this, has kind of orange and red lettering. And this is actually something called a Wordle. The other document has another type of Wordle that has different colors, blue, green, white, and some yellow. And these two documents are a visual representation of what we have been doing for the last six months, which is the discovery process. And what you will see is this information is a header on columns of information that were derived from meetings that we had, either with adults, teachers, parents, which is what is shown in the document with the white and the blue and the green, or the information that we received from student input, which is the one that has the orange colors and the red and the green. So, we did not, we are not giving you copies of the PowerPoint that you're about to see. We are giving you copies of all of the outcomes of the discovery process. And we are also giving you Wordles, that is a visual representation of what we have done. For those of you that know what a Wordle is, basically, you take the words that repeat in a certain process, and based on the number of times those words come up, the size of the word gets larger. So, if you see a very large word, it means that this was a repetitive part of the process, and this was something that came up on a number of occasions. If it's a small word, it's been part of the process, but it doesn't have the same importance as some of the others. So, I just wanted to give you kind of a map on what these are. So, tonight, we are going to be sharing with you the outcomes of a process that began this summer. And the discovery process was one that we chose to take on, that would share with the entire professional learning community, the students, the parents, the teachers, the Board of Education, everybody involved, what we believed was part of our Haldane School community at this, at this time. So, the discovery process, tonight, we're going to be talking about the discovery process, the timeline that we included, all of the pieces, the student input, faculty, parent, and administrative input, and our next steps. So, the discovery process. This was a process that began with three questions. And many of you actually said in the discovery process conversations. And the first question was, what are the characteristics of Haldane right now, in this moment of time? What are we all about? What are our areas of focus? What are our areas of interest now? Second question, what are we preparing our graduates for using the graduates of the class of 2000, oh, it says 14, sorry, 2024 as our indicators? We didn't see that today. We reviewed this. So, the graduate, thank you, Jen. What problem? Oh, it's all fixed. The graduate of 2024 as our indicator. We chose the graduate of 2024, because this is a 10-year period from now. We also know that between now and a decade from now, there will be different characteristics that our graduates and our students should take on and be part of. And so, we had to kind of vision what that would be. We also realized that the class of 2024, they're in our school. They are our third graders. And our role as educators are to create students that are college and career-ready. We need to look into their future to find out what they need, and we need to start preparing them now. This is not a futuristic conversation. This is saying, knowing what they need at this point in time, and knowing where we are right now, what should we be doing to ensure that they have all the foundation that they need when they hit 2024? And the third is, how do we ensure that we are preparing our students for the world they will face? So, we have a picture of now. We have a picture of the graduate of 2024. And now, we have to figure out how to go from point A to point B, how to get from the beginning question, the characteristics now in this moment in time, and the graduate of 2024, and connect the dots. The timeline. This summer, the Public Education and Business Coalition, a group that we are working with right now, that is helping us determine what we believe in and where we're going, came out, and they met with the administrators. We had our retreat this summer. We invited board members to join us, and a number of our board members did come in. And we looked at the process of all three of these questions, where we, where we're now, where we're going, and we began the question of how we get there. In September, when our faculty came back, we asked the same questions to the entire faculty. Our superintendent's conference days consisted of these questions and very long, meaningful conversations about all these components. We had breakout sessions. We had groups coming together in large groups, then moving into small groups, and then coming back into large groups. We then moved to our, the administration meeting with a group of parents. We had multiple parent groups come together. And we also, I had the pleasure of meeting with our group of high school students and a group of middle school students. And from all of that input, all those conversations, these were the documents that were created. Okay, Jen, we're ready for the next one. And now, I will pass it over.
So, with that, we kind of broke up the presentation into two groups. So, Brent and I are going to kind of talk a little bit about the student input and the outcomes that we received from the students. And then Jen and Brian are going to talk about the adults, so the teachers, the parents, and the administrators, what the outcome from those groups looked like. When you take a look, this is just the students and what they said. We broke down their comments into three different categories. The cognitive attributes, the creative and critical problem-solving, civic and social conditions for learning. What this graph represents is, we took their comments, and we put them into those three categories. Now, you have the comments in front of you, so you can read through them all. And there's definitely some overlap with some of their comments in terms of what categories they fall in. But we, looking at this and analyzing this data, really saw the kids talk mostly about civic and social conditionings for learning. And I wasn't totally surprised about that, but I am surprised at the disparity between the three things. I, I'm not surprised that that wasn't the largest and the most talked about, but I would have thought that the cognitive attributes would have been, been higher. And, you know, we've been talking about that and debating that and trying to come up with some theories as to why we see this. Percentage-wise, if you were to look at, these are sheer numbers of comments, but 6% of the comments were based on cognitive, 21% were based on creative and critical, and 73% were on civic and social. So, definitely something interesting as you read through the document to pay attention to. So, then, we take all of the comments that the kids make, and I have the first one, which is the cognitive, which there was only four or five bullet points on that. So, it was kind of simple to come up with a sentence trying to tie those themes together. And this is what we came up with. Learners who are reflective and passionate thinkers. And based on what the kids said, we kind of came up with that sentence to reflect their comments and try to put it in simple form. The next slides, you'll see, it was a little bit more difficult to try to take the comments based on just the sheer number, to come up with statements to best represent those. So, Brent will take that.
Okay. Thanks, Mrs. Sniffin. So, before we take a moment and really kind of dive into the feedback from our students specific to creative and critical problem-solving, and then those other soft skills with our third category that Mrs. Sniffin mentioned, civic and social conditions for learning, I think it's important, actually, that we kind of pause for a moment and think back to the spring when we set forward with a vision to kind of rethink our approach to teaching and learning, and specifically around our initiative with the Makerspace, and really rethinking how we approach teaching and learning to better afford opportunities for collaboration, for complex problem-solving, for students to be creative. Because what was so nice about the student feedback is it really validated that vision that we have, that adaptive and transformative change that we have around teaching and learning and schooling for our students. So, we're hearing that feedback, that those are their needs, and that's what they recognize are important for their success as they move into an ever-changing world. So, as Mrs. Sniffin mentioned, there were a few more bullets than in the first category. And we were able to really kind of distill it down into the statement that's there before you, specific to creative and critical problem-solving. Learners who collaborate to solve complex problems utilizing multiple approaches necessary in an ever-changing global society. So, words like critical thinking, independence, choice, diversity in curriculum, diversity in experiences and interactions with others, non-traditional, passionate, these were the words that came up, that represented that category, and that we were able to kind of summarize and distill down to the statement that's there before you. And then, as we move into the third category, civic and social conditions for learning, it was really, again, it really validated, and it was a delight to hear that feedback from our students that really gave credence to those soft skills that we recognize are so important. That learners are mindful global citizens with a balanced lifestyle. Learners that effectively use technology as analytical consumers of information. So, words like interactions between teacher and student, worldly, relate to people you do not know. Diversity, again, came up. Accepting diversity, social. Words like learning about the world around you, adapting, increased exposure to different types of people, different types of courses, independent study, again, diversity in curriculum. So, those were really the, the feedback that was most salient, that allowed us to really distill it down into two sentences here. Thank you.
So, Mr. Alman and I had the task to look at all of the adult learning community information that was collected. And this was about four times the amount of information that was collected from the students, but it included a lot more people. It included the parent groups, it included the faculty and staff groups, and it also included the administrative group. And here, you can see that the scale on the bar graph is a little different, and that's because of the quantity of information that was collected. But you'll notice that the civic and social conditions for learning is still also the tallest bar and represents 51% of the responses. With the students, it was 73%. What's interesting is the creative and critical problem solver category was 21% for the adult learning community as well. So, that was exactly the same as for the student learning community. And it was 28% was for cognitive attributes. So, there's more of kind of a balance between cognitive attributes and creative and critical problem solvers. But, again, the interest in civic and social conditions for learning far outweighed in terms of the amount of attributes we were given that we wanted our students to have in 2024. So, in distilling down the cognitive attributes, we came up with learners who are able to discern and utilize rich and varied resources as they seek to understand and solve complex problems employing a wide range of approaches. And if you look through the attached information that you have, you'll see over and over again, motivated, intrinsically motivated, proactive learners, and that students are independent thinkers.
Similarly, if you're looking in the document to the orange section in the middle, with the adult learning community and their ideas of the graduate of 2024, under the heading of creative and critical problem solvers, Ms. Wilson and I really struggled to kind of take all of these bullet points and synthesize them into something that captures many of the elements that you see within that list. But what we came up with is this idea that learners who have a curious and entrepreneurial spirit with the cognitive capacity to conceive and create anew. And if you, as you look down that middle column, it's just a few things I want to highlight. It's a great sentence here, willingness to experience discomfort that stems naturally from growth. It's this grit concept that we're often referring to in the last few years. Self-management, self-advocate. Start and start again. Finding the balance between academics and extracurricular. Increasing passion and curiosity in our students. So, learners who have a curious and entrepreneurial spirit with the cognitive capacity to conceive and create anew. And the column on the right for civic and social conditions for learning, the adult learning community, there are a lot, a lot of concepts there. Really, it's worth perusing each of, each of them on their own. But the synthesis is that learners who have a profound understanding and sensitivity to the forces of human versus human, human versus environment, and human versus self. Live sustainably, live green. Good character. Have a moral compass. Refuse to accept what is presented without questioning. Civility. Loyalty. Help kids find their niche. Student entitlement, et cetera. Learners who have a profound understanding and sensitivity to the forces of human versus human, human versus environment, and human versus self. Essentially, what is my place in this world, and what is my role in it? Thanks.
So, where does this take us? Our next step is, we'll be launching into our strategic planning process. And next week, I'm actually interviewing a couple of consultants that will be helping us through the strategic planning process. So, we have already talked a little bit about, as a board, and I think we've shared this in the past, the different categories that we're going to be looking at within the strategic planning process. And originally, we had five. We modified one of them. So, these are the five that we're going to be looking at. We're going to be looking at Haldane, where how do we get from point A to point B over the next 10 years? What is our process, and how do we get there in teaching and learning, which is the nuts and bolts of everything that we do? How do we create students that are college, career? And we added citizenship readiness into that, because that is our goal, and that is what we're trying to, to accomplish as our students walk across the stage in, at graduation. What skills should they have in their toolbox at that time? We're going to be looking at our facilities to see if our facilities match the type of things that we are looking to do in the future. And if not, what are we going to be looking at and considering? We're going to be looking at the financial strategies that we need to employ to make sure that the education and the process of education for our youngest learners is equally as good, if not better, than for our older learners. And with the financial issues that we've been contending with, that's been a question, as whether we can provide that. And so, how can we do that, and what do we need to consider in order to make that happen? We're also going to be looking at extracurricular activities, which includes anything outside the curricular format, whether it be clubs, activities, theater, sports, all of the above. And we will be looking at this process culminating probably sometime, well, it will begin sometime in, in late January, early February, culminating in May, when we present to the Board of Education. And then, hopefully, it will be presented to the board, and they will approve it in June of 2015. So, that is our timeline. So, this is, these are the first documents of a process that will continue throughout the entire year. This is giving you an example of what this community has said is important for our students and our kids. These documents will be given to the Strategic Planning Committee, so they have information, they have consistent information that they can use throughout the planning process, and they have things that they can look and measure in their planning process. So, that is the beginning stage of the strategic plan. We had, this is our discovery process, and we'd love to answer any questions you may have.
Any board questions for the, for the gang first?
I'm interested, can you just talk about like the way you got the responses as far as, did you put them in groups, and they spoke in groups, and then they recorded out? Did they write? Like, how did you gather?
Well, it was one group. We gave them a page that had the questions on them. We gave, on the, all three of the questions on it. And then, they had the opportunity to think it through, jot down some notes, and then we began the process. And it was an open dialogue. We had some individuals that weren't necessarily comfortable being part of the dialogue, so they handed in their responses to the questions as they left. And Jen has been very helpful in helping me take huge amounts of information and distill it down, and to create the categories, then to create, and Brian's, and Brent, and Julia then jumped in to help us create the PowerPoint and the Wordle, which was Brent's idea. Thank you, Brent. And this is what we, this is what we're presenting from all of it. And there were, there were, there were probably a couple hundred people involved in the overall process.
The whole data mining, the analytics is certainly very interesting, but I wonder how reflective it really is of how the community feels. You know, we're saying, this is what the community has, has said is important. And maybe it's important that we, that we look at those graphs properly. And I'm not sure that I'm looking at them properly, because I have a feeling it doesn't say that people think that civil and social conditions for learning are much more important than creative and critical problem-solving skills, which in turn are much more important than the little bar graphs, the cognitive attributes. I think if we were to ask the question, which of those is more important? I have a feeling that people would say that they're all important. And actually, I've just been through, almost been through the college application process with my son. And I think it's pretty clear that colleges are looking for an equal balance in all three domains. So, what would you say, you know, to somebody who might look at the bar graph and think, oh, we don't think cognitive skills are important, we're going to focus all our effort on the civic and social piece?
Can I take a stand? Sure, please.
So, it's interesting you raise that question, because that's something that we were talking about at our Administrative Council meeting today. And I don't think it was a level of importance, but it was a level of how many people commented on a certain area. And what I had shared, what I had felt when I was looking through that is, there's certain things you expect from a school. You expect to be taught cognitive skills, and you expect to be taught problem-solving skills. And when you're asked, what are you envision for the future, you think about things that maybe you're not always taught, and that might fall into the social and civil category. And so, that, we do have to be careful when we analyze and look at that graph and dissect it and say, what does this really say? Because we didn't say, what's the most important to you? We said, give us characteristics and attributes of the graduate of 2024. And my feeling was, my read on that was that people were kind of thinking a little more outside of the box of what a school might not normally offer, and looking to push the envelope, and looking to push what we might offer in the future.
And I concur with everything Jen just said, but what, I think the other piece is that they expect the cognitive piece out of schools. And what they were doing is adding on the soft skills in addition as part of the cognitive skills and the attributes. So, this wasn't what's important and what isn't important. It is, what are, are we giving, are we preparing our students for everything that they may need? And what they're saying is that there is such an importance in their, especially in our students' minds, about becoming global citizens and being, and doing it in the, in the right ways, that this is something that we have to incorporate and weave into what we are doing in the future. So, it doesn't negate anything that it's presently doing, is what else do we need to do? And it's not doing it differently, it may be doing it smarter, but it's, but it doesn't discount anything that we're presently doing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm absolutely sure that that's correct. And perhaps, you know, the heavy weighting at the top end indicates that that's our area of weakness.
Yeah.
We're doing really well with the other stuff.
Right.
But we're not doing quite as much on the, on the other end, and that's where we need to focus our efforts to balance things out.
That's what, what was missing, that, that, the largest amount of things that we're missing were in this category, and that we were doing well in the other categories are perceived well by the people that were asked.
And one of the questions, will the, will the colleges of 2024, will they be looking at something slightly different than they're looking at right now? And if we looked at 2004, and we looked at 2014, I'm sure there are variations in the theme that have happened over the last decade. And I think that there's going to be additional variation within the next decade. And our, our global society, I mean, the fact, if, probably if we were having this conversation in 2014, I don't know if we'd be using the terminology, global society. But it is part of our everyday vernacular right now because of the obvious things that our kids are exposed to, we're exposed to. It's, it's, it's right there, everything. I mean, we're, we're one step away from any place in the world at this point. So, this was, actually, I have to say, this was somewhat of a surprise to us. When we started doing the comparative analysis, and we started dividing them up by these characteristics, we thought, wow, we didn't expect that. And they were color-coded, and they were being differentiated. And we were, I was actually, I did the students' data first, and I was very surprised. I said, look at the differences here. And it was a good learning experience for us. And what we're looking for is what we can do to create the best global citizen, the best graduate of Haldane, and the best future learner of tomorrow. That's what it showed.
So, from a process standpoint, I like process, the last list I saw, we have approximately 25 people that expressed an interest in being part of the Subcommittee Strategic Plan Initiative. How will it work going forward with the five different subgroups versus bringing it all together, versus getting new and more people? together versus getting new and more people and as well as an opportunity for someone who didn't comment on some of these things through the previous focus groups where they can still comment? You know, I can send something in where I missed the first round of comments, but I have a great idea, let me send it to somebody. So how will process work going forward?
Well, once this is presented to the Board, this can now go public. And one of the things that we will do is we will share this with our constituent groups. We have a list of people that already shared that they have an interest. We are going to actually send invitations when we get back from the holidays to invite others that may have an interest to join us, to join us. This information will go on my blog. It'll be part of our newsletter. It'll be, it'll be presented to the community as the first step and they can see what the process will look like in the initial stages using the discovery as the first, as the place to jump off for the, for our strategic plan.
Okay. So can we set up something on our website? Maybe it's a link page or something that shows all these materials?
Yes.
That shows an outline of going forward, how we're going to proceed? Maybe a copy of our existing strategic plan, just as a point of reference?
Yes.
And then something along the lines of what a commitment level may or may not be? Because I know I've spoken to a couple of people and the first question I get back is, how much time do you need out of me? And I'm not going to contribute six months worth of work, but I can participate four or five times or something like that. So as long as we can identify what may or may not be a need level, I think that would be great. And then what I was thinking of doing is drafting a letter to the community for our two local publications and everywhere else, just asking people to participate.
Right.
Whether you have a kid, you don't have a kid, if you're a senior citizen, you're whatever. We want a broad-based group of inputs, you know, in this process so that the plan is representative of our community and not, you know, representative of the most active people in the community. And I think if we can accomplish that to some extent, then we'll have a successful plan that the community will buy into.
And we are also placing an ad in the local papers when we get back from the holidays as well. So we're trying to hit as many different areas of media as we can. You will see this information going on to our website. I don't know, I think Jen just put also information about our first wave of project-based learning and the outcomes of the project-based learning, which is all connected into where we're going. This will be the discovery process and then the expectations for the strategic plan. For those that are watching this right now and have an interest in being part of the strategic plan, what we're looking at is probably five meetings, probably January, February, March, April, and May. Having one meeting a month, there will be kind of a kickoff meeting. People will be divided up into the five subcommittees. The subcommittees will look at the issues, the same issues or the same questions with a different vantage point. And then there will be a report that comes together, is presented to the Board in May. And hopefully, as I said, that the Board will accept the strategic plan for June and we can move on. This will be our place to kick off for next year. So if you do have an interest, it's going to be a series of nights, but we're looking at five, probably no more than six nights altogether.
And Diana, we're looking at 10 years from now, right?
Yep.
But the strategic plan that we're creating is more of a five-year plan?
Yes.
And then after that five years, we reevaluate, see if we still have the same 10-year goals, et cetera?
Yes, and I think there are a couple of things with that. I mean, I think we're going to probably revisit it midway through too because we don't know how quickly things are going to be changing. And at the rate that things have been changing in our learning community and our society, we thought that we would probably touch base midway through to make sure that it's still true to form. We're probably, we're looking at a three to five-year plan at this point, but we're considering the graduate of 2024 because we're educating them now. And then we may put different layers on after the next, after the five years is up and then move to the next five-year plan. But we have to consider the needs at graduation at this moment.
It would probably be a good idea, since there's five of us, five Board members, if we each maybe picked a committee, subcommittee and acted as a liaison to that subcommittee, that probably would be helpful. And we could talk about that, you know, when we come back in January. But I think that probably would be a good idea. And if you want to just kind of digest what you think you may or may not have an interest in, or something you don't know anything about, but you would like to learn something, I think that would be helpful for the process. And then, you know, you can keep us informed as Board meetings progress, what's been going on, you know, from your angle. So I think that would be helpful. And I'll take whatever one nobody wants.
Is there going to be like an administrator for each committee? Is that how you're going to work it?
And we'll be, we'll be all working, and everybody will start out as a full committee and then we'll kind of move in and out of large to the small groups.
It's going to be tough. Everything's really interesting, you know? It's supposed to be interesting. Yeah. And I, you know, I will say, for people who are going to participate in this process, I was on the last one back in '08, it's amazing learning experience, not only just learning about the district, but learning from the other people on your subcommittee and committee. And I'll give a plug right here. It's a great premise and a great preview for someone who may have an interest in being a school board member because we're always looking for people. And we'll talk about that a little later, but it's a great way to kind of learn something about the district that you may or may not be aware of. And that's always a good thing.
So we invite people to take a look at all the information that was collected. It is fascinating and it certainly tells us quite a bit.
Good.
Thank you, everyone.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we just jump to see if anybody from the public has a question on this topic while it's fresh? No? Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Information reports. And we're projecting the soccer team and the other kids around eight o'clock-ish, if I heard correctly?
That's what we're estimating, yeah.
Okay. So let's go to information reports. Superintendent, I guess you go.
Okay. So there are, we have a number of different topics in the, for my report tonight. As we return from the holidays, we are going to be starting or kicking off the budget process. For those of you who have been part of this and have followed through the budget guidelines, sometime in, we're imagining probably middle, maybe into the early twenties of January, after the state of the state address, we will get our first budget runs from Albany. And this will give us an idea of the first run of the budget. We hope that what has happened in the past is the first run is the first run and then there's additional funding that comes in when the Assembly and the Senate meet and they make changes to the budget process. And so we're hoping that the final budget is more lucrative or has more consideration for the needs of the district than the first budget. But that at least gives us something to begin with. So through the, through the spring, we're going to be looking at the budget process. We are going to be looking at modifying the way in which the budget has been discussed in public. And we're going to give more of a holistic view so you can see how the different parts of the budget play out. And so right now, we have been discussing different characteristics that we would like to include in the budget. And Anne is going to be presenting the budget document, the dates that we will be meeting and what topics will be discussed at different meetings. So that's all in the process. But we are looking at streamlining it a little bit. We're looking at making more connections within the budget presentations. We will, we're hoping that either through, either one or two afternoons into evening, we can kind of give you a picture of how the budget is formulating conceptually and more information will be on that. So Joe, I don't know if you'd like to add a little more? I know that this is something that we've talked about quite a bit.
Yeah, I mean, just from experience of the many years of doing this, it seems like we keep doing it the same way, which isn't a bad way, but I just thought, and I've seen it in some other districts, where if we could somehow create the impression and the reality that the budget is a document of ideas and programs and successes and needs rather than a line item that gets cut or gets added to. And it seems like our conversations kind of draw to, well, we're going to cut this because we need this, rather than what we actually do accomplish with the budget. And I think if we could present it slightly differently, for one, it'll be better for the public to understand it because the budget document is extremely complex. But I think people, you know, want to know what, what do you get with your budget? And I think that's something that we probably could do a better job with. And that's just my inclination. I don't have any overly specific ideas of how to do it. I've seen Croton kind of do it slightly differently, I keep referencing. And I like the way they do it. So, you know, we'll talk about it and, you know, see if we're on the same page with that.
Thank you. The second is the Smart Schools Bond Act. As you know, that it was approved through, in early November, as the voters of New York State approved the funding for this and Haldane will receive $248,000 for tech, basically technology-related updates for the district. One of the requirements for the Smart School Bonds Act is that we create a committee that comes up with the way that we're going to expend these funds. We did get a letter that came from the RIC, which is the Regional Information Center, which is the technological arm of the State Education Department and the BOSIs. And at this point, they have not received guidance on what school districts should be doing. We have an idea of the categories, but we have not yet received any guidance with what types of things need to be included in our plan. So as soon as we get that information, we're going to begin that, that planning process. So that's, that's coming. And I believe that the letter from the RIC is on Board Docs. So if you have an interest in seeing what the RIC has suggested at this point, you can see it there.
At this point, do we have any timeline for when we have to actually submit our plan?
We don't have information that came from the state. And this is a little bit interesting because this is something that came from the Governor's office that needs to be followed up and organized by State Education Department. And so we have two different groups that are kind of working in unison or not, as the case may be. So we have, once we get the information, we'll be following through.
Though they did give dates as to when funds will be available in the RIC letter?
Yeah.
Though they didn't give a process of how to get it, which is kind of unusual, but...
Okay. The project-based learning. We have, we have been offering, or we will offer, two full three-day institutes to the faculty members of the Haldane School District and faculty members of other school districts if there are openings available. Our first PBL, Project-Based Learning Institute, began in October and it was a two-day institute where teachers came in to our Makerspace. And we had a staff developer that came from the Tech Valley High School, which is in Albany, New York, on the college, the SUNY Albany Campus of Nanoscience and Engineering. And this is a high school that has been formed, it was formed probably seven to eight years ago and has had a full PBL platform for many years and has, and they have basically gone through all the growing pains of project-based learning. Stacia Snow, our staff developer, came down and gave us, the teachers that signed up for the PBL Institute, two days of very concentrated instruction of what project-based learning looks like, how it can be implemented in the classroom. We had teachers that took it from kindergarten through 12th grade, that all sat in this institute and developed their own project-based learning unit of study that they wanted to implement. So in between the October date and the December date, which occurred last week, they implemented and they began their PBL process and project-based learning situation, unit of study. They came back together for the third day of the institute where they shared the things that they had created and implemented in the classroom, which was really an amazing day, I have to say. I have to congratulate all the, all the members of our learning community that took part in this. They really went above and beyond. And what they anticipated occurring within the classroom and what actually occurred was, it was outstanding. And I think they were as surprised as I think all the participants at the complexity and the level of growth and the amount of interest and, and energy and ingenuity and all the things that go along with the PBL process that occurred through these dates. So I shared with the Board, I shared with our teachers, our faculty and staff, all the projects that were done throughout the last two months. Jen is putting them on the website for parents to take a look at the different areas of focus. And we are now getting ready for our second full PBL Institute, which will begin January 8th and 9th. And then the third day of that Institute will happen at the end of February and early March. And since the outcome meeting or the third day of the PBL Institute, we have had a number of our teachers who understood the excitement, saw the things that were occurring and have signed up in addition to the ones that had previously signed up. So we are going to be close to having 30-plus of our faculty members trained by the time we finish in March. And we're looking at the potential of having some evening in May, I believe is the date that we've been talking about, where we will highlight all the PBL projects that have happened throughout the district. And so I think this is, this is, do you remember the date, what it is?
I want to say it's the Thursday after Memorial Day, Memorial Day kind of falls earlier, so I want to say 28.
So I think if you have the opportunity, we'll remind you, I'm sure, a number of times before now and then, but if you have the opportunity, this is really, this is the type of education described here. And the types of learning that our kids feel is the most appropriate for them at this point and in the future, I think is reflected in this type of teaching. And students are very active participants and it's no, it's not a passive process at all. The students do a lot of the work, or most of the work, with the, with the teacher sharing the information and serving as a coach. So I can say that that was one of, one of the highlights of my career was just listening, spending the morning listening to the PBL projects and seeing the excitement and the energy that was generated by that group. And kudos to everybody who took part in it. So we'll share more about that. Last week, I also took part in a conversation with the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents and the superintendents in Putnam, Westchester, Rockland, and Duchess County invited in the legislature, the legislators, both the Senate and the Assembly that represent this area. And we had a very, I would say, frank conversation about the issues that are, that we're contending with and we continue to contend with for many years that schools are facing now, whether they be financial, the APPR, any of the common core issues that we're, we're dealing with. And we spent hours talking about the things that we need the Assembly and the Senate to understand and the issues that we face on a day-to-day basis. And I think it was a very fruitful conversation. As they come back into session when we return from the holidays, they will be looking at the finances of the state. We believe that there is a very substantial surplus that will come into the budgeting process. I've seen estimates or in writing of up to $5 billion. Last year, we had two-plus billion and I think it's even much more substantial now. The Board of Regents has recently requested that of that $5 billion, an additional $2 billion is put into education. And we are, we are still faced with the GEA, a gap elimination adjustment, which we have been faced with for years. And it still exists and it's still something that is creating financial issues for the district. Our question last year, when we had a surplus, and our question this year, because we will have a surplus throughout the state, is why do we have a gap elimination adjustment when there is no gap? So we will be talking about this. And this was a conversation again that was, that was had with the people that are choosing and deciding on how we are spending the funds throughout New York State. And so it was a very positive experience and I hope that it will continue as we go through the budget cycle. And the last thing here, we have, we, I have been asked in a couple... And the last thing here, we have, I have been asked in a couple of occasions, how superintendents make decisions on whether they are going to close or delay school. So I thought it would be interesting to share with you the process, which is pretty extensive process. Michael Twarty, who is here, who is our Director of Building and Grounds and Transportation, Michael is the person that begins the process when we make decisions about closing school. And he usually gets on the road around 3:30 in the morning, as I have learned, because he calls me for the first time about 4 o'clock. And so he is sharing after he is on the road and looking at the issues that are occurring in this area, and realize that Cold Spring has many different types of hills, valleys, places that have different weather patterns within a small district. We have, how many square feet or square miles are you running through?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think I just saw that somewhere. It's pretty substantial. I think I read that it was...
A lot of elevation.
A lot of elevation, 35 square miles maybe within the district. So I think that's something that he considers, he moves all throughout the region and determines the conditions of the road at that point. At 4:30 in the morning, I get on a conference call with all the superintendents in the Putnam Northern Westchester Region. And we are all, we have all, at that point, we've had conversations with our Director of Buildings and Grounds, or Transportation in this case, and we learn about the conditions of the roads in all of the regions. Sometimes, we have very different districts in different parts of the region. Last week, on Friday, Thursday it was, that we had our third 4:30 in the morning phone call. We had two-hour delays in Carmel and in Putnam Valley, but we did not have a two-hour delay at Haldane because we did not have the need for it. So all of those things are considered, and then we start talking to the administrators, the information is shared. And then we start calling the newspaper and the WHUD, and we send a robo-call out to the families, letting them know, and that's how it's, the decision is made. So I think we have our participants here.
Any questions for Dr. Bowers, just on her report? Just one question, just for the people that are somewhat new and the people out in TV land that may not, we use GEA a lot in gap-elimination. Just to clarify, I guess, what it is, and Anne, correct me. A few years ago, the state had a budget deficit, so they created something called gap-elimination, where they gave you the state aid, and that's where the governor came out with his education increases numbers that he keeps putting in the media. Then they took it back through the gap-elimination, and we've never gotten it back as part of our budget process. Is that a layperson's explanation?
Very nice.
Right, so when you hear about education aid and how much schools have gotten as a percent, they're using pre-gap-elimination numbers. They're not using the net number, which is what we put so-called in our pockets. And I think that's important, because that's a misrepresentation of the facts. But the governor seems to be pretty good at that, so I'll leave it at that.
And this, last year, Anne, it was close to $350,000?
Yes.
That they took back? So our GEA, the gap-elimination adjustment, once they gave it with one hand, took back $350,000 with the other.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we're going to celebrate the soccer team first?
Sure. Okay, so we have our soccer team, I believe, New York State, girls varsity soccer. And it's my privilege and honor to welcome you and say that you are the best soccer girls' team in the state of New York.
State champions, congratulations.
So thank you for coming, and thank you for all your efforts. I'm sure this has been an unbelievable ride. Fun, hard work, and probably 10 years from now will be one of the coolest things that you've ever done. So congratulations. And Tom, you want to be our master of ceremonies?
Sure, hopefully everybody gets in here, I don't know. That's all right, we can get started. Basically, I want to have the coaches come up, I want them to hand out the folders here with, just to let you know what's in the folder, is recognition from the Board of Education for winning the state championship, as well as a certificate from the U.S. House of Representatives, from Sean Patrick Maloney, he also sent something along to you. And I also got an email from State Senator Gibson's office two days ago requesting the roster, so they'll be sending something along within the next few days. So you'll be getting quite some recognition here, well-deserved, obviously. Section champs, regional champs, state champions, you know, you did it all. We had numerous All-State, we had Player of the Year, Coach of the Year, First Team from Poughkeepsie Journal. There's so many accolades and accomplishments this year that, you know, this is well-deserved. So congratulations. Again, the coaches will hand out the folders here, and we'll call you up by your name, okay?
And I also like to highlight and say congratulations to our coaches for the great job.
And just to give Gary a little plug, Gary's an institution around here, literally. And he's, when I first started, you know, at Haldane, Gary was the PA announcer at the football games. He was striping the football field, he was driving the bus to the girls' championships way back when. He's like a fixture. So for him to get a state title, that's pretty cool. Thank you. Any of our players want to share their experience?
Yeah. Marina Martin, the woman of all ages, she's going to be around for 1,000 years. Come on, Marina. You sure?
Great season, guys.
Come on, miss.
Yes.
Come on up here.
You got to look around.
All right.
All-state player, by the way.
Thank you, board.
Your parents and your teammates. Just our home.
Okay, I guess I'd like to thank everybody, the board, you know, everybody, our coaches, especially, the team coming together and winning a section title. You know, it's the first time, it's a great experience. Everyone being there on the send-off, I mean, I've done it a few times now, but it's nothing like coming home to the parade on the way back, a section title, saying section champ, or state champs on the way home. It's like a great feeling for all of us, and we really deserved it. We worked hard through the season, we knew what our goals were, short-term, long-term, and we just worked hard to get it. So it was a great experience, and the support from everybody was great.
Come join your team, ladies. When I call your name out, ladies, you'll come up.
You want me to do it? You can handle it.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know what, you call them out. The coaches can handle it.
There you go. Here, you got the sheet?
You got it right there.
All right, great. Good deal. First of all, congratulations, everybody. You know, it's a team effort. Everybody in this room raises these guys, all right? The village does raise the children, and we're really good at it now, you know? We have great kids at Haldane, I say it all the time. We're very fortunate to be in this area, and I'm very fortunate to be here. I can't thank Evan and Steven enough. Steven Schweickart's here for every sports event, doing what he does best, taking great pictures. He interjects on a soccer field in a professional manner and makes all the right calls at the right time. Evan's there with his expertise, and between the three of us and Julia coming out and helping us, we're very fortunate here, the kids are very lucky. I call your name up, come on up and get your certificate from the state and from the school, the board. It's really great that the board's recognizing us tonight. Is Ally Ashburn here? She was.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Allison Shera? Where's Ally? Come on up. Kira, no Kira? Stay right up, yeah.
Can you put the hands up?
Yep. Alzy, you're here? All right, Alzy Shinquanto? I don't see Isabella. Isabella's at Confortino. Mary Margaret Dwyer. Jordan Erickson is not here.
You can follow him.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, don't hide, come on. Steve's very superstitious. On a soccer field, he's got to sit on the corner of the bench, he doesn't move until we score a goal. And when he's watched Ally's ball sail over the keeper's head, he goes, "That's trouble." I said, "That's going in." That's how he won a state tournament. Teresa Figueras. Don't see Amelia. Sarah Jacoby, Second Team All-State. She also just, I just received in a mail from the New York, or the National Soccer Coaches Association, Senior Excellence Award. Last year, Callie got it, the year before Carolyn Schaefer got it, and this year, Sarah Jacoby is the recipient. It's a nice award. Toby Kane-Sights. I saw Toby, she was a track. First Team All-State, All-Poughkeepsie Journal, and First Team Journal News. She deserves every recognition she gets. Bailey McCollum. Player of the Year in the state, First Team All-State. Honorable mention, Journal News, Second Team, correct? Not too shabby, lady, very good. Ally Monteleone. Second Team All-State. Poughkeepsie Journal, First Team, and Journal News. Correct? Miranda Musso, not here tonight. And Savannah Williams. Congratulations, ladies. How'd the boys' team do tonight? Did they really?
Yeah.
Excellent, very nice. Good stuff. Thank you, ladies, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Could I add one more thing before I leave the mic? I know it's in my report, but I just wanted to mention that all of our fall varsity teams earned New York State Public High School Scholar-Athlete Award, so we were seven for seven. So congratulations to the girls, they're also a Scholar-Athlete team, so just wanted to add that in.
I was trying to get Steve to tell them, last year, we were third in the state with a 97.97 GPA. This year, we were third in the state with a 97.79, and the highest average was 98. So we were right behind the highest team average in the state for Scholar-Athlete. And that's more important than anything, guys, you know, is to get a good education in here. So, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys, congratulations. As I said, you guys will probably never forget that, and don't, because it's pretty cool. So you should be proud of yourselves, pat yourselves on the back, too, while you're at it. Okay, now, not just to make this a sports night, Brian, we've got some other extremely accomplished individuals that we're going to recognize.
Good evening, everybody. So two things that we're going to present here, one of them, the first one is going to be the AP Scholar recognitions, but the second one is the National Merit Scholarship honorees. We're particularly proud, and when I report on this each year, there isn't always such a big audience. So I really want to highlight the fact that one of the best things at Haldane is not just how we achieve and score on our APs, but what percentage of the population takes APs and then achieves the minimum standard or standard of mastery, three or better. And we received, the last two years, we've received awards from the AP program for our rate of participation relative to students scoring three or better. And our overall AP participation rate is as high as 75% of our students taking AP at some point in time in the high school. So it's not as though we're just pushing them through, pushing AP, pushing AP, it's just that our students are pushing themselves to go just outside their comfort zone and achieve at the minimum standard. So we're extraordinarily proud of that program, and those things are reflected in our growing list of AP Scholars. Now, these results don't come out until the middle of the summer, and so therefore, there you'll see that, as I call it, the names, there are a lot of alumni reflected in these distinctions. But the other piece is that you can't usually take an AP until 10th grade, and, you know, there's only one AP in the 10th grade for the most part. So with that being said, it's mostly juniors and seniors that are honored in this or make this distinction. And I'll start with the AP Scholars. Alumni Trevor Mastrentone, Lana Ness, Emmanuel Palacucha is here, the AP Scholar. Come on up, Emmanuel. Yes, stay right up front. So the AP Scholars are students who receive score of three or higher on three or more AP exams. So the next one is Zoe Proven. Zoe, are you here today? No? John Swartzwelder, come on forward, John. Vanessa Uribe, no Vanessa tonight. Trevor Van Brunt. Trevor. Marcus Zimmerman. Didn't see Marcus, okay. And the next tier are for AP Scholars with honors. They're granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all of their AP exams that they were taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of those exams. So AP Scholar with honors, Alec Lane, alumni, John McCann, Bridget O'Malley, Shawna Ricketts, Clayton Smith, and Wiley McDonald. And the next tier is the AP Scholar with Distinction. It's given to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. Mary Callahan, Luke Cleary, Matt Droder, David Hamel, John Hughes, Nicole Padala, Callie Schweickart, Cameron Henderson, and Julia Olson. And a National AP Scholar Distinction is granted to students who receive an average score of at least four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. Kieran Austin, Noah Campbell, and Michelle McEwen. Again, you need to be a senior to have taken all of those, so congratulations. So congratulations to our AP Scholars, and congratulations to our teachers and all of our students at Haldane High School who work so hard to uphold the rigor that we show every day. So nice job. So we'll make them come back up. So we'll make them come back up. The other thing that we're highlighting this evening is the National Merit Scholarship Program. And National Merit Scholars are semifinalists and are among only 16,000 academically talented students nationwide earning this recognition. To achieve a semifinalist status, in the 2013 competition, students excelled on the 2011 PSAT, so as sophomores, and the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, again, as juniors. So, we had one semifinalist, I believe, maybe one of two semifinalists in the entire time that I've been here, and that is Cameron Henderson. And commended students, placed among the top 5% or more, more than 1.5 million students who entered the competition by taking the PSAT, and there are only about 34,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for the exceptional academic promise. That's Wiley McDonald and Julia Olson. So again, testament to the ever-changing and raising academic standards at Haldane. In the past, we've had maybe one, maybe two at the most, to have three in this year's senior class is quite an honor and an achievement, and a lot for all of our students, nine through 12, to aspire to. So congratulations, and thank you, guys, for raising the bar at Haldane.
Congratulations, guys. My head hurts, actually, thinking of what goes into getting that kind of success, so congratulations. Any board comments? Anything to add? We're gonna take a quick break, we got some refreshments. You guys can all get your Sharpie pens out and get autographs from our students, because someday, they will be worth something. And then we'll take a 10-minute break and, you know, congratulate everybody and pat them all on the back. So, thank you, guys, all for coming. I realize your schedules are crazy, but we appreciate coming out. And also, pull up on YouTube, the video from tonight's meeting, so you can kinda watch yourselves on television. Maybe kinda cool. It's not Instagram, but, you know, it is what it is.
Snapchat.
Snapchat, I apologize. My kids say I'm a little dated, and the facts speak for themselves. So we'll take a 10-minute break, and thanks, all, for coming, and then we'll come back and kinda resume what we're doing. Thank you, everybody, thanks for coming back. That was fun. School board life isn't all bad. So it's nice to recognize our students and stuff like that. I just had one comment, all the administrative reports are on the board docs. Just keeping with the spirit of the recognition piece, I saw something in the elementary-middle school notes about the Haldane Heroes Initiative, K through 5. Each week, a student in each class gets recognized. Maybe if you could just run it by Brent and Julia, is there any way that we could bring in the kids? The Haldane Heroes, and bring them to a meeting, and...
Well, we'll have that conversation.
Do that kinda, I don't know how many there are.
I believe, is it one per class?
One per class, per week? Two per class, two per week?
Two per class, per week, that may be.
Maybe if you guys could talk about it, and see if we could maybe invite the kids and bring them to a meeting, and give them, you know, a medal or something, that could be on TV, and we'll, you know, kinda hype it up a little bit. I think that'd be kinda cool.
But I think when we're talking, we're talking about a teacher's class, so there, it would be many students, many, many.
All right, so figure it out. If there's a way of somehow recognizing the Haldane Hero kids. And I actually have a Haldane Hero t-shirt that was designed by one of our students, probably nine years ago, as a fundraiser for what was then the start of the Haldane School Foundation. And it might be cool to bring the t-shirt back, and I'll get you all t-shirts, and maybe every kid gets a t-shirt that says "Haldane Hero," designed by a former Haldane student who probably now is...
It's vintage.
28-years-old. But it might be close, if it's made to make it work, when there's a will of the way.
So it's two per, what is it, two per class, per week?
So figure it out. Put all your brains together, and let's get it done, somehow. That's my challenge.
That's a good challenge.
Okay, I'll get the shirts, you get the kids, and then we'll reconvene, see if we can make a deal out of it. But I think it would be fun, I think the kids would have a blast. So, let's see if we can make that happen. Let's see, where are we here? We are Committee Minutes. Booster Club, Technology, Wellness. Any questions, board?
There's a lot of major initiatives underway within the Technology Committee, I noticed from reviewing the minutes. Specifically relating to such things as use of Google Apps for Education, iPads, and mobile device management software, a demand for desktop machines. And which prompted a question in my mind about our readiness for the state mandate, well, the federally and state mandated online testing that's going to be rolled out sometime within the next, I know it's been kicked off. What's the latest on the timeline for that, and how's our level of preparedness?
I think it was put off for another year, do you know the...
Well, it keeps getting put off, but in terms of being prepared, we do feel prepared. Between the levels, the numbers of computers we have available in different labs, on different laptop carts, and also the iPads. And we do every year update a survey that we fill out online. So in terms of stuff, we feel okay, whether we have equity between who has a desktop and who has a laptop, and who has a tablet. And we don't know what the guidance for that's going to be, but we do, that is, a regular subcommittee talks about the park being ready for park, and making sure that we can handle the needs and the numbers. And that's where being a small district helps us, because if we have three labs, we can handle a grade level at a time in one testing window.
Yes, certainly. One thing I'd like for us to not forget about is that we planned earlier in the year that we would schedule a time for us to be updated on the iPad program in the high school. We certainly had a very interesting visit, I don't remember exactly who, Evan, and, well, two years back, we did a site visit one day. You guys were there, I think? We visited the high school classrooms. Saw the iPads in action. You know, I think it would be valuable for us to check in and see how the program is going, see what kind of instructional changes are taking place based on this introduction of technology. And get, and begin to sort of think about, is it successful in the way that we anticipated it would be, or is it, are there challenges that we didn't anticipate, or is there a better way to do this? Is iPad necessarily the right platform, or is Chromebook possibly something that we should be thinking about? Because certainly, I know that nationwide, sales of iPads to schools have been on the down slope, and Chromebooks have been going up, and they've now reached a point where a lot, the sales of Chromebooks are exceeding sales of iPads.
Well, it's a web-based type of device, so we would have to have shifted from, shifted into something like a Google platform.
And that's exactly where this sort of thought process came from, because, you know, when I see that we're considering moving towards the Google platform, which definitely has a lot of very major pluses, it's something that would tie in well to that.
I just wanted you to know, Chromebooks have always been on our radar as our surface, the surface machines. And it's an interesting trend that we're seeing, because I've been following that. Some districts left iPads, went to Chromebooks, they're now going back to iPads. So it's kind of nice that we haven't jumped in too many different directions yet, and we're kind of learning from others, and, you know, let them make the mistakes first, and we're just kinda slow and steady going along. But it is something that we talk about at almost every technology meeting.
Jen, is the expectation that the state tests will be able to be used on multiple different platforms? So like, they'll kind of look the same for a kid on an iPad as they would look if they were taking it on a desktop next to them?
Yeah, well, what it'll be is it'll look the same, because you'll put all of your machines in something that's referred to as kiosk mode, so they'll be on the internet, and it'll all look the same. There are some places that are talking about, well, it's not fair if this student takes it on a tablet, because of the size of the screen, versus this person on a bigger screen. And all of that hasn't been worked out. Initially, when guidance came out, you had to have machines that would last at least 10 hours. And then, that changed, so you didn't have to be hardwired. I will be honest with you, I feel like we have the technology, if we need to do the testing. I don't know that we have the infrastructure, in terms of people, to troubleshoot technology problems during the testing. And that is something that the RIC has been working with districts on talking about, because if you're gonna have testing for 12 days, and you're gonna have kids on computers doing it, you're gonna need, you know, boots on the ground to help if a computer freezes. So, and I think that's one of the reasons a lot of places are piloting the testing online, and coming back with a lot of feedback that, you know, the online system has to be so perfect and work so seamlessly, and not crash. And so, I don't think in my lifetime, I'm gonna see it happen.
And in a little district like Haldane, it's not as complicated as some of the very large districts, and so I think that that process continues to be slowed, based on these very extensive districts that can't possibly have enough devices simultaneously.
And Peter, I think if we're still on track, we're supposed to talk technology in the high school iPads, second meeting in January. Including with a site visit, which will be, obviously, not during the board meeting. But that's what we originally had set up, and whether we're still on track for that, maybe you could just kinda keep us posted?
Yes.
Anything else on the committees? Okay, great, thank you. Communication from the public, on anything that we've spoken about? Public?
I apologize, I'm actually gonna go back to the strategic planning.
Okay.
I wasn't ready to make a comment, and I was unprepared, sorry.
That's fine.
I was part of the strategic planning, as a parent. I actually was lucky enough to take part in two of the discovery processes. There, I was part of just the regular, a regular group of parents who was doing the discovery process, and then there was another meeting of members of the Learning Differences Committee that I was able to attend also. And I just wanted to share something with you, to create some awareness, and I had some concerns. In getting ready for the first discovery process, I went back and looked at the strategic plan. I had seen it before, but I just wanted to go back through it. There was very little in it regarding learning differences in special education. So I then went to the special education plan. And the one that I found online, I found out was not the most updated version, and that's my first concern. And in looking at the two, and then one that I had printed out many years ago, I saw very little differences between all of the documents. They were incredibly vague. I didn't really get a sense that I knew where Haldane was headed in terms of learning differ, like, what was our response to "No Child Left Behind"? What were we doing in the district regarding children? You know, were we sending them out of district? My surprise, because it's such a large monetary item, you know, even as a taxpayer, I was concerned that I didn't really have an idea of what, where we were headed. Also, because previously, we had had a discussion at a previous meeting regarding independent education evaluations, I took the opportunity to take the list that was at the end of the most recent version that I was mailed, from Jennifer Wilson. And I called all of the numbers at the back that were listed as resources for parents. Most of the numbers were horribly outdated. One of the numbers told me they hadn't had an evaluation program in over 20 years. So my other concern and question would be, you know, who is, who is the author of this document? Why do we not have an updated version? Why is this the information that we're providing for parents? I was horrified and shocked, so maybe going forward, we can do something about that?
Okay, thank you. You're on the subcommittees, right? Your name's on the list?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other communication from public? Okay. Correspondence, H1 and 2, we'll group them together. Basically, we've got two letters, which basically are the same topic. One from Sandy McKelvey, one from Carolyn Lewwellen. Let's see if I get that right. And both deal with basically the issue of police officers patrolling on campus, and the desire to have uniformed versus plainclothes. Both letters in their full are on board docs, if anybody wants to take a look at it. And then, just to clarify, the topic of board communication, any letter that's addressed either via email, or hard mail, or hand-delivered to the board as a whole, is considered correspondence, and they will be written, I mean, included in our business meetings. This, because we didn't meet the last business meeting. And we will include it. And I think we've also put in an auto-response now, so when someone does send something electronically, they get an acknowledgement that it was received. Usually, I'll go in and respond to, you know, everyone who sends me something, and just say that I got it, and X, Y, and Z, unless it deals with a confidential issue, and then at that point, it won't be public. So just a few for thought for that one. Consent Agenda Minutes, I, one. Motion? Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. J, one, J actually, Consent Agenda Financial, motion? Discussion. Remember, this is consolidated for two meetings' worth of stuff, so you'll see warrants for two different months. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? K, one, Consent Agenda Personnel, motion?
Motion.
Second, L, second, discussion. Dana, can you just explain what DASA is? D.A.S.A.?
It's the Dignity for All Students Act, and it, there are new state requirements and state mandates that came into effect, I believe this is its second year. And there are certain reporting requirements that we have, that if there's any student that is bullied, so to speak, or there's a question about how they have been approached or dealt with, we have to report it to the state. And so, DASA is the acronym that really covers all the new requirements.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Aye. No opposed. Unfinished Business, L, one. Later start time follow-up conversation. As you guys recall, last meeting, November 16th, 18th, I think it was, we had an overview presentation about the concept of moving back start times for middle school and high school. And the way we left it was that we would revisit the topic in approximately a month, and just get some feedback from the board as to what we do, don't wanna do, or anything else. So, we're a month later, any thoughts? I have some, but I'll defer to you guys first.
I mean, I missed the last meeting, of course, I wasn't here when you discussed it. I mean, I, you know, from a personal point of view, my kids would love it, because they're not morning people. You know, I have heard, you know, both sides of it, as far as, you know, there's one, you know, sentiment, I guess, of, you know, well, we never had to go in later, we just went to bed earlier and got up early, and, you know, so I've heard that. You know, I think if logistically, it's possible, and we don't screw up other commitment, time commitments that we have, as far as, you know, out-of-district transportation and other activities, you know, it's definitely worth looking into, and I know there's other districts in our area that are basically at the same point that we are. same point that we are, investigating if it's possible. You know, obviously, there's going to be some downside to some families because maybe some families with their work schedule want it to start early so they can get the kids to school because they have to get out early. Or potentially, you know, if, let's say the state doesn't start for an hour later, does that mean, you know, 10th period goes an hour later and now your after-school activities start an hour later and end an hour later? You know, so it's, it's definitely, you know, it's, there's always a other side of it that I guess we need to think about. But, I mean, overall, I mean, I guess if we can pull it off, definitely worth looking into.
I think it's about figuring out if what we get for it is worth it. You know, it's like, how much do we believe in the science of it? Like, how, how much do we believe in it and feel like that's valuable? Because it's going to be, we, I think we can do it if we want to do it. You know, it's logistics. And anything logistically can be done if we all decide we want to do it. But it's about figuring out, is it worth going through the logistical rigmarole for what we get? And I think that's the piece that we all need to decide and the community needs to decide, is, is the benefits worth it? And I don't know that, I don't know that we know that yet.
One, one piece of information which along those lines, you know, if it's not broke, why are we, you know, fixing it, one, one piece that I came back thinking of, you know, it'd be an interesting piece to, to know. What is, what is the, do we have issues with kids missing buses, coming to school late for the walkers? Like, like what, like, you know, and that's, you don't have to answer that right now, but like that would be something to bring to the table. Like, you know, how many kids a week miss their bus? How many of the, of the kids who don't take a bus, you know, come to school late? Like, is, is that, is that an issue, you know, in the school? You know, because that's, that's part of it too, you know? But I think you're right. Like, if it's not, if it's not, you know, why, what exactly, what are we looking, you know, is it a, is it as big of a problem as we think it is? So.
Pete?
Yeah, I'm really glad that we're having the conversation. I do think that there's a lot of merit to a later start time. I mean, I think, I don't think that, my suspicion is that the problem is not kids missing bus or getting in late, but it's, are they ready to learn?
Right.
At that time of day? And I think the science is telling us that they're not. And if we were to delay the start time by an hour, it would be more beneficial to them as learners. And, and so if that is true, and we're hearing this message from some pretty heavyweight organizations with a lot of credibility, I think we have to take that very seriously. And, and that's, that's the win. You know, it's not something that we can quantify in dollars saved or whatever. But everything, I think we're reading suggests that there is a, a big benefit as far as student achievement. And so that's, that's the win. And logistically, it's certainly challenging, but it's, it's very reassuring that there are actually other districts nearby. Rhinebeck, Hen Hood, I don't know of any others, but I imagine as, as, as our conversation continues, which I hope it will, I mean, I don't think we're going to do anything anytime soon. I think that's pretty clear. But if we could continue this conversation and the media picks it up, other districts will see, oh, Haldane's talking about it, Rhinebeck's talking about it, Hen Hood's talking about it, maybe we should talk about it too. Because we do, I think it would be extremely difficult if we were like to odd one out in our, in our area. So I think we just need, and definitely we need to find some way to get the pulse of the community on this because that's, that's the real big unknown for me right now. Because John, as, as you were pointing out, the family issues that this potentially generates are, are pretty major. And, and so hearing from families is really important, I think.
Well, and it was in our book read too, that idea of this, if you're going to implement something so huge, like this huge change, the benefits have to be really clear and everyone has to be bought in to the benefits. Otherwise, the huge change just seems overwhelming. So it would be about making sure everyone was on board with the benefits and really communicating that. And then the rest of it, you know, those are the technical changes, right? Those, that, those just kind of can fall into place over time. And people will go for it if they really believe that it's for the best interest of their students. So it's communicating that.
I mean, I think since this came up as a topic, it was an article in the Washington Post originally, after the American Academy of Pediatrics came out with their policy statement, it's really started to gain some traction in a lot of districts. And they're at least starting to talk about it versus not talking about it at all. I think it's worth us continuing to talk about it as a board and as a community. Realistically speaking, it's not going to happen next September. That's just logistically impossible. And I think given the budget process and the strategic plan process, which can be all-encompassing, I don't think this is something that's going to happen between now and September. But I would suggest that we digest and keep an eye on this. There's three websites that I highly encourage people to keep going back to, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the School Start Later Campaign, and the National Sleep Foundation. All three are excellent and give really good timelines of how to do this properly. This is the kind of topic I think that needs to be done slowly so people become educated on it. I think the science makes perfect sense as a layperson. But I think it's something that we may want to put a committee together, maybe sometime late spring, when we're past budget, past strategic plan, and look at possibly something as a next-year project. And see if it's something that we want to take one more step. And that would be my suggestion. It's not going to happen for September. And I think if we're going to do it, we should do it right. And, you know, solicit feedback, but also get an education as to what's going on. Because there are a lot more districts talking about it than that we're doing three months ago. And that, to me, says something. So that's what I would suggest. Let's keep it on our radar. Let's keep learning about it. And, you know, let's keep revisiting it because I think it's a real topic. And, you know, at your level, Dr. Bowers, what, you know, you're hearing from superintendents and what you're hearing from the administrators. You know, Hen Hood, if I understand it correctly, really feels that there's some savings transportation-wise, and that's why they might be pursuing it. Would we realize those same things? Maybe. But let's keep an eye on it because I think it's a real, I think it's a real topic, in my opinion. So. Good?
Yep.
Okay. L, 2. We've been talking about the Northern Westchester BOSI's board election. And they had their election, so I just wanted to let the public know that Mr. Douglas Glickert from the Peekskill City School District was elected to fill the vacancy on the Putnam Northern Westchester Board of BOSI's. So congratulations to Mr. Glickert.
An overwhelming majority.
Overwhelming majority. He was Haldane's choice. I dropped him a note in the mail today, just congratulating him and wishing him luck and keep us posted if there's anything that we need to know about from his angle. So I just wanted to put that on the list. Land sale. Diana, do you want to kind of?
Sure. We've had conversations with the school's attorney and the realtor. And we were talking about potentials of including an, an option in, to buy process in the offer. And at this point, we're kind of on hold. And the, the offer is still out there. And I think that we're waiting through the spring since nothing much can be done right now because of the weather and the, with the subdivision and some of the, the tests that need to occur in order to get the potential subdivision. Through the winter months, I think we're on hold. And then we'll, we'll see if the buyer returns in the spring and move on from there.
Okay. So the end result is the James Pond property is still for sale. It's still on the market and I encourage someone to purchase it. And, you know, we'll see where we go with that. There's been a couple of thoughts floated around. I know Peter had an idea of possibly having a conversation of, do we go ahead and subdivide it and go through that process? That's something we may want to talk about, you know, as this process unfolds. If we're not seeing any reaction to it. I think there's a market to it. And I think the ultimate buyer is going to be someone who wants to build one house there. But that's just my opinion. And I think it's a good piece of property in a good area. And I think it has value. So let's keep trying to sell it. Okay. Asbestos abatement, L, 4. I think we've got.
So over the Thanksgiving weekend, we did do some asbestos abatement in the auditorium or the small gym. And the areas behind the basketball courts were fixed and there was some abatement that occurred at that point. So it all went well. We are also at the point that we just had a number of our custodial crew that has been given the certification to deal with small asbestos projects. And so the training occurred within the last couple of weeks as well. So we're moving forward.
Excellent.
Great.
Yep.
One thorn out of the side.
Yep.
Good. New business, M, 1. Ms. Clark is where you come in.
The recommended act, this is CSC CPSC recommendations. And the recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations by the Committee on Special Education and preschool special education is indicated.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. M, 2?
Okay. This is an authorization to allocate funds to the general fund for the expenditures for the district office and modular building structure issues and authorize the transfer of the balance to the capital fund. And the recommended action is, do you want me to read the whole thing?
Um.
I'll read it.
Yeah.
That the Board of Education authorizes an increase to the general fund and an allocation for the expenditures related to the district office and modular building structural issues and authorizes a transfer of the balance to the capital fund as indicated. Do I read all this?
Okay. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. This is basically goes back to the issues that we had in the summer with the district office and the structural beams as well as the modular building, which is no longer. Andy, want to kind of summarize the net, net, net of all of this?
Sure. We had total insurance proceeds of just over $160,500. Expenditures for both projects totaled just over $88,000. And the balance of $72,450.65. It was the board's desire to put that balance aside for future space considerations. And in speaking with the auditor, I did agree with his recommendation that the transfer of the balance to the capital fund so that it's available for any space issue expenditures that could come up in the future would be the way to go.
And can you just remind us, Ann, versus the Capital Reserve Fund, the purpose of which is?
Sure. The Capital Reserve Fund is, is where the funds would go to lock in for the future if you have a real set project that you're working towards. If, if we're not really sure what we're going to use the funds for and because of the uncertainty of space in the district, probably would not be a real benefit to, to lock the funds up because in case we have to do any type of testing, architect fees or any planning or just construction to, to allocate additional space for, for classroom, putting it into the capital fund so that the board can authorize the, the use of the funds would be a benefit.
So it gives us more flexibility in the event it's needed. And there's no negative consequences to the tax cap and all that formula stuff?
No, it does not impact the tax cap until the, the funds are expended.
Okay. And assuming we approve the '72 transfer, we'll probably have an estimate of around 100 grand in that account going forward?
Yes, about $100,000. I don't have the final bills yet for the asbestos abatement, so I can't give you an exact figure on that. And just to, to let the board know that in the future, should you decide that you want to really lock that money up for a specific purpose, you can always authorize a transfer from the capital fund to the capital reserve. And then that will need voter approval to use those funds.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thanks. Makes perfect sense to me. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. M, 3. This is a topic that Ann brought up a few months back about saving the district some money.
Okay, this is the approval of bond refunding, and this is a roll call vote. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the refunding bond resolution and attached notice of estoppel related to the refinancing of the outstanding debt on the Series 2005 high school building bonds.
Motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion. Ann, can you translate the very substantial legal document into English? Just kind of quick summary of?
Sure. I, I have some fun facts on the bond refunding that you might be interested in.
This is a 32-page legal document that's written in very legalese.
I'm putting it down into 30 seconds. It's, there were two bond issues in the high school building project. One issue in 2004, one in 2005. In 2012, we refinanced the bonds from the 2004 issue. And now the 2005 issue are callable, which means that we can refinance. That's what a bond refunding is. So the old interest rate on the bonds is 4.325%. And based on current market conditions, the new rate, somewhere about 2.8%. And that would be a total savings to the district of $348,000 or about $20,500 per year for each of the next 17 years. And it could change a little bit, not anticipated because the, the rates are pretty stable for this. So going forward, there's, we won't close till the spring because there's a lot of, a lot of logistics to do to refund the bonds. And at that time, Joe will have a stack of papers about this highest sign.
Thank you. Ann, is there anything that we need to be concerned about in the terms of the arrangement, other than the dollars and cents?
No.
Okay.
It's, it's just really a continuation of the original bond issue. It's not going to extend the debt service. It's going to end the same amount of time. I think it's $20,031 will be the last payment.
Okay, great. Thanks, Ann.
And the only, the only downside is that you only get to do this once. And so if interest rates were to go down, it's too late.
Right.
But if we're looking at 2.8%, it's hard to imagine that they're going to get down a whole lot more. So.
Yeah. Good job, Ann. Any other questions? Roll call, I guess?
President Cudo?
Uh, yes?
Okay. Vice President Daley?
Yes.
Trustee Champlin?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, I guess? Is that how it works? We're good?
I think it is.
Do you have to do, okay. Uh, 4?
His approval of rate of pay for per DIAM substitute teachers and per DIAM substitute school nurses. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves an increase in the rate of pay for per DIAM substitute teachers and per DIAM substitute school nurses to $100 a day for certified substitutes and $90 a day for non-certified substitutes.
Okay, motion?
Question.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion. This we talked about, I think, a meeting ago or two meetings ago. And I guess the question was competitive balance with regards to getting subs that we're way below market and we're having a difficulty, but you can clarify that if you.
Right. And there, there are the same, there's a small pool of subs that all districts are vying for. And we have to be competitively priced in order to have the subs
And we have to be competitively priced in order to have the subs come and support our district. And so we had to look at the regional norms and consider what ours, what we were paying our subs. The other part that we looked at is how much was budgeted and whether we have surpassed the amount that was budgeted. And when we looked at last year's figures, we found that we had come in under budget. And so what was budgeted was $75,750. And we expended $72,720. So there was, we have not gone over budget. And we believe that this will allow us to have a greater flexibility with our substitute teachers.
And to be clear, Dr. Bowers, we're not increasing the budget for subs. We're just increasing the amount that we pay each sub.
Right. And we believe that we will still be within the allocated amount.
I'm very sympathetic to the argument. And I certainly would make it a priority of mine when we get to budget time. But we didn't budget for this year. And we still have more than half the year left, so there are many unknowns here. So I'm certainly in favor of doing this for next year, but I'm not in favor of doing it immediately.
Any other thoughts? Evan, John? Jen?
Well, I mean, one of the other ideas is, you know, to not necessarily increase it all the way to where we wanted to go immediately, but maybe for the rest of this year, just bump it up a little bit. So you're, you know, I don't know. I'm sure, look, if I was a sub, I would know how much Haldean paid per day. And if I got two calls, I wouldn't go to Haldean. I'd go to the other district, which paid me more for the day. I mean, that's just the way it is. So I can understand how we want to get there. I understand Peter's point, that, you know, what happens if all of a sudden we have to bring in a long-term sub for some reason and, you know, we're paying them this rate?
Well, I mean, it sounds like Anne and Dr. Bowers are confident that we're going to be able to still be within budget with this rate. Is that accurate?
With nothing unforeseen.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, but, you know, if anything unforeseen happens, you know, you can, you know, but I'm sure that's built into it as well. I mean, the certain number, right? I'm sure we have, for every teacher, we allocate a certain number of days and so forth. So for someone that works on that kind of formula, you build in an unforeseen situation. Like, the unforeseen situation is built in already. So if we have an unforeseen situation, it's kind of built into that kind of budgeting, right? Is that a fair statement? So...
It's built into the budgeting.
It's built into the budgeting that we're going to have an unforeseen situation. I mean, as crazy as that sounds. So, I mean, so I think if they're confident, then I would feel confident that we'll be able to make it through the year without going over budget.
The other piece to consider as well is that the subs that we're using when we have staff development going on within the district, we will be running through BOSI's. So we will get BOSI's aid on that as well for next year. So that's also something that isn't in the budget because the level of staff development that was not, I mean, it was understood and it was planned, but it wasn't part of the budgeting process. So there will be reimbursement for that as well through BOSI's aid.
Is one of the, Peter, would you feel more comfortable with it if it wasn't at this stage of the year? Like, if we had gotten through half the school year and we were still on target?
Really, it's more a matter... It's really more a matter of principle than anything else. You know, we budgeted for this amount. And in my mind, it does not qualify as an emergency situation. We've been, we've had several unanticipated emergencies this year so far. And we determined that we can afford to remedy those emergency situations because we're anticipating that we have some slack, sufficient slack in the budget. Now, we know that we're going to need that slack at the end of the year. We can't spend 100% of our budget, or else we're going to be looking at a hole in next year's budget. So that's why I do think we have to be prudent and say, and determine if we think this qualifies as an emergency. You know, maybe it is. If we can't get subs, then that's an emergency.
There are days.
But this is the first time that this has been brought to our attention. So I'm not necessarily convinced that it qualifies as an emergency. But as I said, I mean, this group of people, it's a very important group. It's the only group that does not get to negotiate the terms of their employment with us. And if you look at what they get, it's not a whole lot. So I'm very sympathetic, you know, don't get me wrong. And for next year, I would certainly make it a priority, but I just think as a matter of principle, it doesn't qualify as an emergency.
So there's basically three options, if I understand it correctly. One is to not do anything, wait till next year. Two is to do an incremental increase, which was Anne's two-step process approach, which raises it slightly to make us more competitive, which you believe, if I'm reading it correctly, that we would stay definitely within the budget for the year. And then the third option is to raise it to the so-called market rate. And that would probably mean we would be very close to, if not exceeding, budget based on historical perspectives. So those are the three choices, if I understand it correctly. I like the two-step process as an incremental. I get Peter's theory, and I get everybody else's theory. How about we do this? How about we defer this to January 6th when we come back from vacation? Everybody can absorb the multi-step process theory, which is kind of new. And I don't think anything for all intensive purposes is going to happen between now and January 6th, other than most people are going to be on vacation. And it'll give us a chance to kind of digest it a little bit. And maybe if there's any other information you want to forward as to the dilemma of getting subs, or the life of a sub, and that kind of thing, maybe that would be helpful? And we'll deal with it on the 6th? How's that?
Fine.
And we'll put it to bed on the 6th? Either way?
Good.
So we have those three options. Unless there's a fourth, which I don't know about, but I think those three are probably all we need to consider. Right?
I have a thought before, yeah.
Okay.
I'll just say, Joe, just one last thing on it. Just again, you know, for someone that runs a school budget, again, you mean, these guys, these guys run the schools. You know, that's what, that's their job. They have a budget to pay subs. They feel as though we can do this and be within that budget. And I find it hard to believe, especially with Anne at the helm, that they're going to, Anne's going to come back to us in May and say, you know what, I was wrong. I need more sub money. That's just not going to happen when they're asking for this. So, I mean, they have the budget. They say it could be done, then it could be done. So that would be my take on it.
Okay. All right, so we'll put it to bed on the 6th. How's that sound? Let's take a break. D... Where are we here? Five? M5, sorry.
An approval of amendment, an amendment to the 2014-2015 contract with HTA of New York to include additional services as per student IEPs. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the amended contract for 2014-15 with HTA of New York to include additional services as per student IEP and authorizes the superintendent of schools to sign this contract on behalf of the district.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Any clarity as to what it came about because of something?
We have, we have a teacher that is, or that is out on medical leave. And we have areas of the IEP that require that we have some other practitioner provide the services for us. So this is, this will allow that to happen through IEPs, and these are requirements.
Is there any budgetary impact?
Yep.
There is?
Yeah. And we're paying substantial, but it's a requirement.
Therefore, it's the criteria for emergency, so I have no problem with that.
Legally, we're bound to do this.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? M6?
This is an approval of sports merger agreements with Garrison School for Modified Softball. Modified, let's say, baseball?
Baseball.
Modified lacrosse for 2014-15. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the sports merger agreements between Haldean Central School District and the Garrison Union Free School District for Modified Softball, Modified Baseball, and Modified Lacrosse for 2014-15, and authorizes the president of the Board of Education, superintendent, principal, and director of athletics to sign these agreements on behalf of the board.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second. Discussion? This is the third year for each of these, and my understanding is they've gone pretty well. And the respective host schools, I guess, pays for the program, if I understand it correctly. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. M7?
This is an approval of an updated statement of agreement with the Bureau of Emergency Services for the use of school facilities as mass care shelters. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the updated statement of agreement dated December 16th, 2014, with the Putnam County Bureau of Emergency Services for the use of school facilities as mass care shelters, and authorizes the superintendent of schools to sign this agreement on behalf of the district.
Motion?
Motion.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. M8?
This is a policy review, first reading, amendment of board policy 7130 of non-resident students. Just discussion.
Okay. Anne, do you want to kind of give some context?
Sure. We are looking at kind of unique scenarios where a student may stay within the district for a period of no more than one year, where the board may consider the circumstances of the request and grant them. This will probably be a multi-step process. This is the First Amendment that we're probably going to be looking at, just allowing the board to give, give some type of consideration for unusual circumstances. We're also looking at other policies that have come from the BOSIs that we service, that services and helps us through our policy revisions that will come later on. But this is the first stage in that process.
Okay. Any comments?
So my understanding that this is a response to a specific situation that's arisen, which we've been made familiar with and which certainly has significant merits. But the policy as it's currently written doesn't provide the board with any flexibility in dealing with individual, specific cases.
So the addition to this policy was the recommendation from our attorney. It was just, it's just a couple of sentences that would allow you to have the flexibility as a board to consider these situations.
So if a student has an extraordinary situation because of whatever reason, the existing policy doesn't allow any flexibility. What this does is it allows us to at least have the next conversation and see if this extraordinary situation is worthy of consideration. So basically, this gets us to the second conversation. It doesn't mean it happens. It just means that you can have the second conversation, which to me makes perfect sense. So...
I mean, I don't know what to say and what not to say because as far as this particular Again, I'm not even talking about this one. It just, it opens up the door because that situation is, could be something that can be, and I'm not saying that's happening here and so forth, but for future reference, that that could be something that could be manipulated in a way. You know what I mean? Because we're like, all right, well, let's not, you know, do it till, you know, till October, so this way, you know what I'm saying? As opposed to, like, I remember a couple of years, Joe, when we had a situation with a house fire.
Yep.
Okay? That one, I was actually surprised that we actually had a problem there, that I was like, someone's house burned down, that, you know, that is a circumstance. So whereas as in this situation, again, I don't even know about that situation, but that opens up, that, I don't know, is an extraordinary circumstance because if you think about that, that process of that issue, that doesn't happen in a week, you know what I mean, or a month. That's something that could, that takes, you know. So if all of a sudden, it just doesn't happen in October or November, you'd know it's coming. You know, a house fire, you know, an illness of a parent, I mean, those are extraordinary circumstances. I don't know if this would fall under the realm of an extraordinary circumstance because it was clear, I guarantee at the start of the school year, the parents knew what the situation was going to be. You know what I'm saying?
But Evan, this policy isn't about that circumstance.
No, I know that. So, but I'm just saying, my point is, by saying special circumstances, I think it has to be much more detailed as far as, like, outlining, like, house fire, illness of a caretaker, of a guardian, something like that, you know?
Well, I think that that's the next step, is that by us saying, yeah, we want to have some flexibility. That's step one. And then step two is, what is that flexibility?
Right.
What are our parameters? What are we looking for? Is there an application process?
Right.
Is there an interview process?
Right.
What do we want to put in place to make sure that people aren't taking advantage?
No, absolutely, absolutely. And also, I think also where they're going and where they're, the situation next year also is to take, because this is, this is a lifer. This is a Haldean lifer that needs a gap year. So that's a special, that's a special circumstance also.
Sure.
Right. And what this is saying is, Mr. and Mrs. School Board people, you need to do your homework and you need to be thorough on the second step of the process.
Mine doesn't say that.
I'm telling you what it says. That's what it's saying. And I think that next step of the process really does need to be thorough.
Right.
But at least gives you the discretion of deciding what is or what isn't extraordinary. Whereas currently, it's blank.
It's black and white.
It's cut and dry. So that's kind of what this is.
Right.
So this is our first reading. You know, I don't know what you guys feel, if you want to put this on January 6th as well. We can digest the facts. But that's really what this is. It gets you to the next step. And the next step's really where you got to do your homework and you got to be thorough. And it would be within, with input from the school attorney and obviously, you know, the administration and such. So...
Why would I think this change without having determined what our next step, that the conditions of our next step is? Does that put us in any kind of a, is there any liability associated with that, do you think? Because we're now saying that we're going to entertain special cases, but we haven't set the parameters at this point. Should we wait and do the whole thing at once, once we've decided what those parameters will be?
Our attorney's advice was this is step one. All you've done is allow the next step to have a conversation.
But we could have the conversation anyway, right?
Yeah, you can have the conversation. But if you're not going to do this...
Before that, we couldn't even have the conversation.
But there's no reason to have the conversation. We're not going to do this one.
Yeah, I just don't want to... It's coming from our attorney, so I'm quite confident that he's looking out for our best interests. But does this leave us open to, like, we pass this and all of a sudden, we're inundated with people saying, hey, I've got a special request for you?
Right.
Can I just get something?
Yep.
That the, this is for the policy change, and usually the policies are broader statement. There is another set, which is called the regulations. And the regulations get, the more detail, you know, gets down to the logistics of it. That we put that in the regulations, just to let you...
So let's do this second reading, January 6th. In the meantime, if anyone has any specific questions or concerns, send those to Dr. Bowers, and then you can get some clarity from counsel. So you have a little bit of homework to do between now and the 6th.
And I guess I should just share some of the other considerations, not with this policy, but when we extend it out. One of the things we're going to be discussing is the possibility of getting a SEVIS rating, which is basically Homeland Security giving the districts the option of accepting for tuition students that come from different countries. And the policy that is, has come from the BOSI's Policy Department includes that, so it would allow schools to help defray some of the costs by taking in students from different countries. And we talked earlier on in the year about the fact that Southern Westchester BOSI's just opened up a program that they're now accepting students from... Westchester BOSI's just opened up a program that they're now accepting students from China. And that this would allow us, if we ever chose to go that route, to have the flexibility to do so.
What's that called? SEVIS?
SEVIS. S-E-V-I-S.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. M nine, Budget Calendar. This is our first look at the draft of a budget calendar for the 2015-16 budget. The calendar is not etched in stone. Obviously, it can be changed. But this is a draft that Ann put together, kind of incorporating some thoughts and ideas. And Ann, do you want to, or Dr. Bowers, do you guys want to?
Sure. It's, it's really just the first stab here, because I know that the Board expressed the desire to consolidate some of the, of the information into less meetings so that we're not having, you know, spread out presentations on each little bit of the budget. And as Dr. Bowers talked about during her report at the beginning of the meeting, to, to view the budget as a more whole view, instead of chopping it up and, and dragging it out. That we can still talk about, certainly the rollover budget in early January, and get direction from the Board as far as budget parameters, and talk a bit in the second meeting in January about the Governor's Executive Proposal. And during February, you know, that's where it's still open for the Board's discussion on, on how you want that, that one big meeting or two somewhat smaller meetings to, to give all of the educational rationale of the budget. Then going forward from March 1st on are just deadlines and legal dates where certain things need to be done. There's not a whole lot of, of leeway in, in those dates. Those are set by the state. But really, the budget process and, and the different budget proposals, that's something that the Board, I think, still wanted to talk about.
Good. Any thoughts, comments, questions?
Yeah, I would just like to work back from the due date. So we're scheduled here to adopt the budget on April 21st. It has to be at least 25 days before the vote. So what is 25 days before the vote? Do we know that? Because I would hate for us to be adopting the budget, like, at the last minute. I always would prefer to have some-
Well, April 21st is the last-
That's-
The last board meeting that you could adopt the budget. That's what happened to us for the 14-15 budget. I know that we, I think on the original calendar for the current year, we talked about adopting the budget the first meeting in April. And it was just too soon. There were still all of those conversations, and we had just gotten the, the Governor's final proposal, as far as that goes. We said, "What's the last time we could do it? Could we wait till the next board meeting?" And we could. But really, this is, there's real no wiggle room unless you had another special meeting, maybe a couple of days later. But that is it.
Yeah. So for that reason, I'd actually be more comfortable targeting an earlier date for adoption, knowing that if we're not ready, or something comes up at the last minute that we didn't anticipate, then we have, we have some breathing room. It doesn't, it's not a hard, fast deadline.
So are you considering April 7th date as potential?
Or somewhere in between.
Or somewhere in between, yeah.
Well, our-
Well, I know I won't be at the April 7th meeting. So, I mean, I don't know if that, I mean, we could still adopt at 4:00, but we always like to do 5:00.
Yeah, we do like to have everybody present.
Yeah. I mean, because that's my vacation week, that week.
Or we could just put a potential adoption on that if the Board is ready at that point.
Yeah, I mean, I would-
It's just that last year, on the April, April 6th was when we got the final state aid projection.
Right.
So, you know, I-
And, and the school is closed the week before.
15?
The, the, the 6th. The 7th, April 7th is the first meeting in April. The school is closed the week before that, for the holiday.
Yeah.
So if we get our final state aid runs, April 6th or April 7th, because last time it was, excuse me, it was the, you know, right on the Tuesday of that first board meeting. And we're talking about the, the tax levy projection and the estimated revenues. I'm, I'm not sure how comfortable, you know, we'll be to, to adopt the budget on the same day that the, the runs come out. And if the 21st is really very close to the last day that we can do it, my only suggestion is if you wanted to add another meeting somewhere in between.
It looks as though the 14th is the right day for us to target, because that would give us, the vacation would be out the way, we'd all be back, and it would still give us a week, just in case something-
Right. But we could always adjust this-
Yeah.
Based on circumstances. I think the question that we have to probably get our arms around immediately, or at least by January 6th, is the concept of this budget gala, which is the Educational Rationale event, which is basically presenting the spending plan as a whole program. And are we in favor of that concept, or do we go back to the way we used to do it, which was piecemeal by program? I think it makes perfect sense to do it, maybe do it over two meetings, so it's not so lengthy and extensive and overpowering and overwhelming. But I think that would be a different concept for us and the community, and I think actually it would be a good one. And there's nothing to lose, other than we're going to learn something.
Why not give a shot, really?
Right. So the question's really, which you can ponder over the vacation, because we're not going to adopt this, and the calendar can always be changed. Do we want to do that concept? And if we do want to do it, do we want to do it in one night, one day, two nights, successive dates? Do we want to use the existing framework, or do we want to use something different? So that's kind of, I think, what we got to put our arms around while we're away. That's just my opinion. But I think it would be great.
I, I would think it would be good, too. I would say one night, because you're, you know, if you're getting people to come out, they're there already, so you got them. So one night. But also, though, but if you're going to do it, it's got to be, you know, calling it a gala doesn't mean that people are going to show up. So I'm just saying, no, I mean, it's a Tuesday night.
Yeah, I don't know if gala is the right word.
No, but I'm just saying, no, but it's a Tuesday night, regular budget, but regular time we do board meetings anyway. So why, all of a sudden, are people going to come out for this presentation rather than just a regular budget presentation? Like, what are we going to do that's going to make this different, as far as not the actual presentation? Because what are we going to do that's different, that's going to actually grab people to actually say, "Okay, well, I'm going to go this year"?
Well, you're going to get it all at once.
No, I'm not saying anything. I'm making, you know what I mean? Like, what, what we might do might be different, but how's anyone going to know that? And what, what would make them come in the first place?
Well, one of the things that-
One of the things that we're talking about including is a real substantial rationale that directly relates the money spent in the budget to what's happening within the schools and in the classrooms. And I-
No, I'm not, I'm not questioning what, what the actual event will be and what you're going to do. That sounds great.
But that's an important thing for people to know.
Yeah. So, but we need to get the word out-
Right.
That, that'll say, "Okay, well, this one's going to be different." Normally, those budget meetings are boring, but this one is going to be different. So I'm just saying, though, what, and I'm not asking, so you're thinking about things to think about for the next meeting? That's something we need to think about, is what are we going to do to get people to see this new type of presentation?
Yeah.
Okay? I mean, we threw out an idea at the retreat, and again, this is not something that we even all have to attend, okay? I mean, to maybe do it on a weekend. You know, do it at the budget meeting, during a regular meeting, but do it again, right? Didn't we say that? Like, do it on a Saturday? You said that.
A Saturday.
Yeah.
And the, the other option would be to do it in an evening. So the problem sometimes when you start getting into this time of the year, is there's so many different sporting events on the weekends that people can't be there.
Yeah.
So this is an option to that.
I think, though, that the reason people would come to this meeting is because it's, if you want to come to one budget meeting, this is the one. Not, "We're going to have six budget meetings."
Right. Right.
If you want to know about the budget, come to every one of them.
Yeah.
No, this is one meeting.
Okay.
Three hours. I'm sure we could pack it in. And the other thing I like that you've showed me, Joe, is some of the materials that Croton has put together to support their budget process. And one, one of those items is, it's like a high-level narrative to frame the discussion. Like, where are we now? Let's look, where are we coming from historically? What are the constraints that are likely to frame the discussion? And then, and they have a lot of detail in there, too. It's not just wishy-washy. Really, there's some detail to, to really frame things and to help us set broad-brush goals and establish priorities.
And the historic data is very compelling. And to see what school districts have been dealing with over the last many years is something that will be very helpful.
And I love the budget document that Croton has with the assumptions. I think it's great, because it deals with more than just Gappy and the other guy with Dr. Valenti had, Cappy and Gappy. It deals with enrollment. It deals with the CPI. It deals with, you know, it deals with everything that encompasses what makes the budget what it is. And it's fabulous. If anybody out there wants to look at it, you can go to Croton-Harman. It's right on their homepage. And it's budget assumptions. It's a PDF. It's four pages. But it's excellent. And I think if we even started with that, we're 100% ahead of where we were last year.
And Ann is already on the job.
It's my opinion. And I'm going to send everybody a marketing plan as to how to get people to come to the budget gala. And we won't call it a gala. So at least have a sense, because I think if we just get people to understand what we're trying to do, we'll get more people than we've gotten in the past. I've done, been doing budgets now here for 11 years, and I don't like the dog and pony show that we do. And I understand why we do it, but I think there's a better way.
We also talked about doing some of these off-site.
Yep. Some of the meetings off-site would be great.
You know, the library, senior center, firehouse. Because this budget affects all community members, not just the ones that have kids they're having. And it would be great to make everybody comfortable, feel like they can really come, and that this is actually for all taxpayers. So, just reminding us about-
And again, it doesn't have to, as I said, we all don't have to be at every presentation. You know, we, we all don't have to go to every presentation, except for, of course, but, you know.
Okay. So we'll revisit the calendar on January 6th. At that point, we will also have a rollover budget, which basically is contractual obligations, as well as all line items frozen, gives you a snapshot of what a budget would look like. And that's what a rollover budget is. It's kind of a start point. Okay. You guys good?
Good.
Okay. Last item, M 10, upcoming community forum. Jen, I'll let you frame this, if you like.
So as many of us know, we have, oh, sorry. As many of us know, we've got three school board seats up for election in May. So, you know, something that we've been talking about is that that's a big deal, and that's important, and that can really change the framework of our Board and framework of our school and of our community. And that we want to make an extra effort to make sure everyone understands what it means to be a school board member, to hopefully entice more people to get involved, and to get involved for the right reasons. So educating the public on what a board member does, what a board member does not do, what our role is, and kind of answering questions and just helping people, you know, lift the veil over what a school board member is. And so we talked about doing that in sort of a question-and-answer forum off-site, because again, you do not need to be a Haldane parent to be a board member. You could just have to be a community member, right? So doing it off-site, maybe at the Butterfield Library or something similar, and having current board members as well as past board members as like a panel for a question-and-answer experience so that people could really understand what we do. And I spoke to Lourdes of the PTA, and she said she is happy to help coordinate that, as well as help moderate, answer questions, et cetera. So I guess it's just kind of throwing it out to the Board to see if you guys think that's a good idea, and if we're all excited about it.
I think it's a great idea, and I think it's just an opportunity for people to hear different perspectives of what it's like. There are different versions, and there are different levels of intensity, and there's different roles that people play. And I think it would be good to just hear it, not, you know, issue-specific, but, you know, "What is your life like?" I mean, I talk to a lot of people about this, because I tend to take a more ambitious approach to getting people to get involved. And, you know, like, "Why does it affect your family life? How does it affect going to Food Town? You know, does my phone ever stop ringing?" Things like that. There's a lot of myths, and then there's realities. And I think it would be helpful for the public, and for anyone else who, you know, maybe has an interest, or maybe doesn't have an interest, but maybe in the back of their mind thought about it, but also, you know, someone who's on the fence and just wants to hear the reality of the situation, of what it's like. I think it would be absolutely fabulous. We have three seats up. I'm not running for reelection, so that's public. So my spot's definitely open. I think it's time to kind of get some fresh blood. And for me, it's time to move on, so I won't be running. John and Evan are both up for reelection, so whatever you guys decide is what you guys decide. If you do decide to run again, you have to get reelected, so it's not automatic. So get that out of your heads, if that's part of the process. But it's important, and you need good, solid people, I think, who can think, who can address an issue from all different angles. And, you know, it's important. You know, a bad Board can mess things up. It's the fact of life. A good Board goes unnoticed most of the times. But, you know, I think we want the unnoticed versus messing it up. And it's a great experience, and I think it's something that people should consider. And there's many, many talented people around here. There's a lot of new people around here who are really talented. And, you know, maybe they just need, you know, a little push to realize that it's not as overwhelming as some people may think. So that's what this came from. I think it's a great idea. Jen was kind of driving the whole thing, so.
The Westchester-Putnam BOSI's Association, they do something like this. I remember attending it last year. But it's very broad, and it's really about kind of school board governance in general. So it, it certainly is educational, but it doesn't, there, it leaves you with a lot of questions of, "Well, what, that's all really interesting, but what is it like at Haldane?" So my thought is that this could really be a little bit more site-specific about what we actually do here. And I think Joe's point is interesting that it's really, like, it came to mind as something for people who are interested in running for election. But it's also just interesting for anybody to kind of know what, what we do and what we don't do. So.
Okay. So we'll start throwing some dates around, and we'll talk with the PTA, and, you know, they offered to help with it. And I think it'll be a great, you know, great thing that we can publicize, you know, at all our meetings and stuff. And hopefully there's a good turnout. Okay. Anything new from anybody? I know we've condensed two meetings into one, which is probably not a good idea always, but it is what it is.
Some school districts only do one meeting a month. They, they, this is how they, they work. I prefer the way we work.
Anything new? No? Okay. Anything from the public? Questions? Big public. Motion to adjourn?
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays to everybody.
Yes.
Enjoy your break, if you have one.
Happy Hanukkah. Tonight's the first night.
First night?
First night.
Happy Hanukkah.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Have a good break. Good holiday.